One of these shirts says, "I'd rather be at the pool."
Yeah. Call meeting door, roll call please.
Commissioner Yevgenyevich?
Here.
Commissioner Tweedy?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Mayor Eastman?
Here.
Okay, we'll now have opening prayer and pledge of allegiance if you'd like to join us, please stand.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us, we thank you for this week, Lord, you have blessed us abundantly and your mercy has been great weather-wise and we pray for our friends and neighbors and families that are all out in the field in harvest and we pray for their blessing and protection and that you would grant us a good harvest. God, we pray for our legislators and the situation with our schools and we ask that you would give wisdom and get something settled quickly that our teachers and all can stay employed without interruption. We pray for our meeting this evening and everything that is before the commission and we pray that you would give them wisdom and that you would give direction. We thank you for those that are here and any that have any business before the commission, may you bless them. We pray for our city and its employees and their families and just your continued blessing upon each one and protection. We continue to bring our first responders before you, especially in the heat, that you would just protect them and give them wisdom as well in the different calls that they will be making. We pray for our military tonight and whether they're home or abroad, pray for their protection and the blessing of their families as well. Thank you for this great country, we give you praise for all, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Warren and seconded by Commissioner Tweedy that we approve the agenda. Any other? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Uh, have any? No visitors? Okay. We move on to awards and proclamations. Witnessed the 2015 AAA Traffic Safety Gold Award presentation to our Kansas City Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. Good to see you again. It's a real pleasure to be back here for the fifth consecutive year to be able to honor the Arkansas City Police Department with the fifth consecutive gold award from AAA. First, I want to recognize Mr. Troy Wells is here on behalf of KDOT. KDOT is really responsible for helping us identify and encourage possibly deserving police departments to apply for the award and then they're scored on a variety of points for things that they do in the area of traffic safety. And the Ark City Police Department is being recognized this year for their active participation for six years now in the highly successful T and C Belt Usage Program called SAFE, for their community educational efforts like their bicycle rodeo, the city safety fair, their dare camp, educational pamphlets, safety tips on Facebook, and their rollover crash demonstration efforts. They're being recognized in emergency medical response for collaborating with EMR services when crashes do occur for better control of the crash scene to aid the EMR vehicles. They're also being recognized for their enforcement efforts with special traffic enforcement, their K-9 and bicycle units and nighttime seatbelt check lanes and an engineering for their safe pace, speed and traffic, excuse me, safe pace, speed and traffic safety data collection sign and their traffic and bus pattern design with USD 470. Our Kansas City is now one of only two communities in Kansas to qualify for a gold award since the award's inception in 2011 by demonstrating superior efforts in addressing local traffic safety issues. So it's just a real pleasure to be able to present this fifth award. We have a special diamond for the fifth year winning of the award and I'd like to call on Chief Dan Ward through the receiving room.
Congratulations. Thank you. There's no more.
Thank you. I just have to say, I'm accepting this on behalf of the limited because they've done all the work. I have to sit back and take the credit. Their statistics really show tremendous improvement in things like seatbelt usage, both at the adult level and the team level and their enforcement efforts show that people are really paying attention to traffic safety in the community. A lot of, a lot of the tickets that maybe were given in the past years, not as, not as many, which shows people are paying attention, you're not having to cite people's off too. So congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you're still not done, Chief. Want to introduce and swear in new Arkansas City Police Department Officer Kelsey Horne.
Commissioners, Mayor, I'd like to introduce you to our newest member of our team. This is Kelsey Horne. She will be attending the Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center training starting in the twentieth of this month. Once she graduates in September, I think it's thirtieth, then she'll come back and start her fourteen weeks of field training with our department. She's, she's very familiar with law enforcement. Her husband is with the Cali County Sheriff's Office and her father is with Winfield PD. And she actually was working with the Cali County Jail at the time as a corrections officer. So she's very familiar with the criminal justice system. So we're very pleased to have Kelsey on our team and at this point, if I can have the clerk come up.
Can you hear me? Raise your right hand and repeat after me, on my honor, on my honor, I will never betray my badge, I will never betray my badge, my integrity, my integrity, my character, my character, or the public trust, or the public trust. I will always have the courage, I will always have the courage, to hold myself and others, accountable for our actions. I will always uphold the Constitution of the United States and the state of Kansas, my community and the agency I serve.
And I would like to report, we just had a little conversation last Sunday about how many positions were down and having a hard time finding people. We had interviews today and the interview board said that they had a very good turnout and I have some great applicants coming to me next week for finding interviews. So I'm very happy.
Wow, very good. Good deal.
Kelsey?
Good luck.
Good luck.
At the academy.
Good luck to you. And hope to see you around town. Okay? Thank you. Okay. We'll bypass item number three, we'll go to the consent agenda. I have any discussion or motion?
Mayor, I approve, I move we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that, but on item number two, maybe Nick ought to kind of talk about just a lot of things and that, because it's kind of...
Marla?
Marla.
What's that?
On item number two, just for the public.
Just to describe the, the items, just briefly.
Oh, the policies?
Yeah, just very briefly.
Yeah, just for the public.
Of course. The open door policy is just the way that we like to communicate within the organization, having an open door. We have particular steps for employees to report suggestions or any of their concerns and then of course we have the other steps to report any unlawful harassment. The next one is the organizational structure, which just explains the departments and the divisions there in the departments. Chain of command is the way that we like to communicate also up and down through the chain of command, through the departments and divisions. We also have a policy for our position classification plan. That one's a little more complicated than the others. That is where we actually lay out what we consider to be full-time and part-time positions and their work period scheduling, how many hours they work and some information about the benefits. Following that is a performance evaluation and merit increase policy. This just outlines how we try to manage employee performance through performance evaluations and also merit increases. We are, we provide a performance evaluation annually for each employee with an opportunity to earn a merit increase based upon their performance. And then this also gives employees that demonstrate exceptional performance another opportunity with the express permission of the city manager to possibly receive a merit increase. And then finally, safety footwear is a policy regarding the footwear that we require for city employees in particular positions to wear in relation to that position. And we also talk about the fact that we will reimburse the employees up to $100 annually to help them purchase their safety footwear for their jobs here at the city.
Good, thank you.
You're quite welcome, thank you.
Is this a yearly thing we have to do?
Each one of these policies, actually, we're going to be doing this for a little while. When, once we get them all updated, then I want to continue to work with the management team to keep them updated and should we ever need changes, then our policies state that I'd need to come before the commission for you to approve those policies.
Do you follow any national guidelines?
Not on the, on the footwear. We, we have so much variance in jobs that we leave it up to the department heads or division heads to determine, but they also look to some of the ANSI standards to, you know, for the, for the tread and for the ankle height and all that sort of thing.
Okay. Thank you.
No, you're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, there's been moved that by Commissioner Tweedy and seconded by Commissioner Warren to approve the consent agenda. There's no other questions, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Okay, now down to old business. Discuss applicants for and possibly vote to fill vacant position on city commission. Okay, commissioners? Any? I'll, I'll start. When the vacancy came up, there were some people that heard that might be interested and contacted that person, they weren't interested. Then I kind of came to city manager and told him I was kind of wanting to look for somebody to try to change our demographics, I guess I should say. And I was kind of wanting to look for a woman to sit on the commission and couldn't find any and asked several of them, they didn't, and so Mrs. Welch put her application in. It just, she just happened to do it and I appreciate that. And the other three applicants, Mr. Jennings and Mr. McDonald, I appreciate that, that gave us something to compare to. Okay, anybody else? Ideas?
I'm going to start it off with a motion that we appoint Pat McDonald to fill the position and let me explain why I'm doing this. Pat and Charles have both been past commissioners. Karen ran, Charles ran some, some years ago. James Jordan has no real history with, with commissioner of the city other than the traveler reports that he did. Pat is the most recent commission member that chose not to run and that is why I think he, he should be, because he's more familiar with everything that we've been doing. And that's why I made the motion to appoint him.
Any discussion? Other commissioners?
Yeah, I'd like to, who's? I see Charles Jennings.
Ms. Welch, would you want to stand up or not?
No. All right, I was hoping to hear something from those who have put their, their name in as to why you might want to become a commissioner, whether it's again or, or now that you'd want to become a commissioner.
All, all three?
I see, I see there's three here, so that unless there's the fourth person that I don't recognize, so.
He's not here.
Yeah, I'd like to, so if you're not here, I guess then you're out in my mind and if you're here, I'd like to hear from you. So, I guess. Yeah, come on, you stood on, so, yeah. I know you ran and, and I, I remember that election, that was about four, four, well...
A few years.
Four years ago or so. And, but why are you interested now again and what do you hope, what, what voice do you hope to be or, I guess?
Tell me your thoughts.
My thoughts are that I was born and raised here in Arkansas City. I've attended schools here in Arkansas City. I graduated from the Cali College here in Arkansas City. I've served my city for forty years in the Arkansas City Police Department. I'm familiar with individuals, I'm familiar with issues, but still, I like being retired and this is just a part-time job and it would give me the opportunity to once again have the honor to serve.
Were you saying the commission's a part-time job or your retirement's a part-time job?
That, for sure.
Retirement?
Yeah.
Now, the commission job can be as much time as you want to spend?
Full-time.
Full-time, if you, if you want to do that.
Sometimes.
Yeah, sometimes it is, but usually it's part-time, we hope.
Any further questions?
I just, no, that's all. Thank you. Patrick, Charles?
Either one of you?
Do you have anything you'd like to say? All right.
Don't really have much to say, just that I hadn't thought about it, but I was asked by people that I respect if I'd put my name in and considered it for several days, actually. Had to consult my family and, and think about it and I respect very much the people that had asked me and mostly I did it for them.
Mr. Jennings, you're the last one.
Yeah, everything?
Anything to say?
I believe you all have the statutory application to fill that seat with inserted time limit. I think it's very important to you all that you select someone that you feel like you can integrate with very quickly, work well with at, and move forward. So I just, you can't make a wrong choice, I'm seeing three people, can't make a wrong choice. I applaud you, I tip my hat to you for this difficult decision, it's one of many you've faced and you've done well in the past, I'm sure you'll do well, go forward. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to say? Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Tweedy to elect Mr. McDonald. Mister, right?
McDonald.
What did I say?
McDonald.
Mr. McDonald, I'm sorry. No second? Or is there any other? Well, for lack of second, that nomination has failed. I would like to nominate Mrs. Welch. I'd like to see a lady back on the commission. It's nothing against you gentlemen, I feel you would both be well and we appreciate your input, but haven't seen the lady on the commission for quite a while, six years maybe, maybe longer and it would be nice to have a lady back on commission. Nine years? Okay.
You've been off for nine years? You're the last one, weren't you, about, Dottie?
Yes, I came off in eleven. Oh, that's not nine years.
No.
Five years.
Okay.
Five, six years. I thought, I thought it was five.
I was going to say, I thought you were the last one.
Nine years ago I went on.
Okay. But I, I'd like to see a lady back, back on the commission that, that gives us a little bit of, makes us look prettier, let's put it that way. And I think she'd give us some good insight, been here for her whole life and so that's, I'd like to nominate myself.
I'll second that motion.
Any other? Another discussion?
You know my feelings. I don't have anything against Karen, I just, I just think Pat, we're doing an excellent job for us since he's been here and he's just, hasn't been off the commission that long. If I vote no, it's not because of who you are, it's just, I'd rather, I, my personal opinion is I'd like to have Pat on.
If I was to say, of the three that spoke, Karen was the only one who actually said she wanted to be on the commission. The other said it's because someone else asked me, or maybe there's no one else to do it. So I appreciate that stance.
Yeah. Okay, I'm moved, the motion was that I nominate Mrs. Karen Welch and it was, motion was seconded by Commissioner Warren and so I called for a vote. All for the motion to elect or appoint?
It's a voice vote.
Yeah. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Congratulations, Mrs. Welch.
Okay.
I...
She takes her seat now, doesn't she?
She takes her seat now.
No, I swear in.
Need to get sworn in, Mrs. Welch.
Do you have an extra agenda?
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the state of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties of city commissioner.
And faithfully discharge the duties of city commissioner.
So have we got.
So have we got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you have to take your seat.
I'll say yeah.
It's not that part-time.
No.
Wait, we need somebody to stay for a while. Will you stay for a while? At least a little. Oh, one of the other reasons I want Pat, she's got a beard, we got to stick together.
Yeah.
You know, it's been so long since I've seen Patty, walked in the mall the other day and I was like, what? Of course, I shaved since then too, so.
Well, if, if you have some interest, please show up again, you know, besides...
I do appreciate you turning the application, nothing against you or, or Mr. Jennings, I just, really, I had no idea who I'd vote for, but Miss Welch, Mrs. Welch was the only one who really sounded like she wanted it, to me. So I appreciate you applying.
So do I, very much so. Okay, you have an agenda, we have, do you have an agenda in front of you now?
She died.
Okay. All right. New business?
Item one, receive the Arkansas City Police Department's annual report for 2015.
Given the fact that you had electronic copies, would anybody like a printed copy?
She didn't, she did not get a copy?
I looked, I looked through them.
Since you printed them off.
Did you print them off?
Since you printed them off, I appreciate that and I'll...
Hate to waste the printing cost, I have big fancy paper.
If you don't want to keep them, I will take them back.
Okay, you can have this one, mine back.
Okay, Commissioner Mayor, we started this journey when I came here in 2014, spent about the first year talking with citizens, talking with employees, trying to figure out what we do well, what we don't do well, our strengths and weaknesses, our opportunities for growth. And we came up with our strategic plan that we presented and actually started on at the beginning of 2015. Over the, the year of 2015, we made some pretty good impacts, I think, on our strategic plan and to start out with, want to cover some of the major accomplishments. If in your, your booklet there, you'll see quite a few of the strategic accomplishments, several pages worth, but I'm just going to talk about the major accomplishments. We did enter into the accreditation process, as you're fully aware at this point, and I'll try to bring you up to speed, the accreditation process is a major undertaking and we've, we've made some good grounds. We've had some slight drawbacks that have plagued us with not being able to move as fast as we can, but we're trying to get back on target with that. We should at this point next year actually go into the self-assessment phase to where we're, we're going to be wrapping it up, so we'll make some good grounds on that. We implemented a new records management system. Records management system for police departments is basically the, the heart and mind of the police department, we can't function without it. It is a major deal to change over to a new records management system. It took us about three or four months to set it up and get everybody trained and then once we got them trained, we have, have had two refresher trainings trying to work out the bugs and get everybody on board. It is now up and running and we're starting to, to understand it and utilize it well, so we're hoping that that continues to do well. We added the mobile computer in the car. When I came, we had computers in the cars, but they were being used as armrests because they did not connect to CAD, they could not run tags, they didn't have the capability, they had that in the past, but that had gone away. We are now back up to having cars with computers in them that are connected with CAD. We've even gone to voiceless dispatches of non-priority calls, can actually come on the screen and the officers can take care of it without actually having to have the dispatcher dispatch things over the air. Body warm cameras, you approved the purchase of the body warm cameras and they are working out wonderful. That is something that I'm very glad we did. We've had one complaint since we went to body warm cameras and everything was beautiful, color and full volume and exonerated the, the officer completely, so it's definitely worth its money. The, the employee warning system, this is something that is part of accreditation and basically it's a software program in which if we have an employee who is all of a sudden starting to show up late, calling sick, maybe is involved in pursuits, all these different high-risk things, the, the idea behind it is, it's going to catch it and alert us with flags saying, hey, wait a minute, you've got an employee who is going through something, having some problems and traditionally if unchecked, those things go to excessive use of force. So we now have a program and we're now documenting and keeping track of those things so that we, we address those issues before we have a problem such as excessive use of force. We also recruited and hired four officers in one year. That was a major undertaking and as you see, about fifteen percent of our staffing. We had a major training emphasis on mental health issues. A lot of people that we have contact with today are in mental crisis and across the country, we've seen a trend over the years that officer-involved shootings oftentimes are involving people with mental crisis. Our, our goal with crisis intervention training and mental health first aid is to try to get all our officers the tools that they can recognize and understand how to deal with somebody who's in mental crisis and the bottom line is de-escalate, not escalate. And so when you're dealing with somebody with mental crisis, you have to deal with them in a different way. Our normal traditional way of dealing with them will actually escalate those. So that training was undertaken and we've got everybody trained on mental health first aid and we've, we have a group with crisis intervention training, but that's a much more extensive training, we're continuing on that.
Chief, did they come in and, and train the guys or you have to go somewhere to do that?
The, the mental health first aid, we, we actually collaborated with four county mental health and they came in and did that during our in-house training. The crisis intervention training, we are sending them up to Peckham and it's a week-long school. We're also working with mental health here to try to start doing something here locally and start bringing in others and hopefully we can get something going every year to where we can actually have a week-long class and get everybody trained there. Another one that we've, we really put a lot of emphasis on is vehicle pursuits. We have written and revised vehicle pursuits policies, I think, three times since I've been here. Vehicle pursuits... Vehicle pursuits are an area that is a large liability for departments and cause a lot of problems. Ours is very strict and very, I think, well-written and comprehensive. We now have an analysis program, so every single pursuit we have, it's completely analyzed. We go through all the steps with the many supervisors, the captain and myself, and then we brief on it to determine, do we need to change policy? Do we need to have more training? Do we have disciplinary issues? Do we need to do anything other than say, hey, good job? And so, that is probably going to reduce the number of pursuits we have. We average, right on average nationally, with the departments our size, we're about four a year. And so, my guess is we might see that go down a little bit as time goes on.
Do we have statistical data put in place if we aided an outside agency, like somebody coming in from Oklahoma? Does that show up in your data?
Yes. Yes, any pursuit we're involved in shows up in our data. We actually, quite a few of our pursuits actually start in the county and come in and we then engage at that point, so that is included.
If we just put down a tire strip, is that considered pursuit?
No, the definition for pursuit is we are attempting to stop with emergency lights and sirens and the vehicle will not stop and we proceed over ten miles per hour over the speed limit and I think that's it. So if we, like, we had one just the other day where the county came in and asked us to try to stop a vehicle they had lost. The officer kicked on the lights, the vehicle started to take off, the officer had never exceeded, I think, seven miles per hour of the speed limit, but realized this is not something I can pursue on because of the original charge and he shut down. So it didn't count as a pursuit because it didn't go over ten miles per hour.
How many pursuits do you end up that are initiated by the department?
Probably about half, two, maybe three. And unfortunately, most of those end up going to Oklahoma. So that adds another layer. We also worked on training for supervisors for managing use of force, another area that's a great liability for departments. One of the problems that departments get into that leads to use of force problems is they don't manage them correctly, they don't review them correctly and allow officers to go basically a little too far over time.
I've got a question on that pursuit thing, if, once you get through, pass the city limits, are we still going after them? Or do we turn it over to the sheriff? I mean, if it, I mean, how's all that work?
There is a matrix that determines at what point you do consider continuing on. If it's, let's say, a high-level felony, that's a violence-type situation, then you would notify the other counties that you're pursuing in and request their assistance. If we're going into Oklahoma, again, if it's going to be for a felony, then we're going to continue on and ask for assistance. We've also focused on blue courage, we got a grant that brought in the blue courage group and this is a new training that just started just a couple of years ago. And it focuses on changing the mindset of police officers to make a difference, make a change, and not just enforce the law. It's a complete, it goes with our goals of the department and it goes with the culture of this department. Unfortunately, I'm aware of many, many departments that don't have the culture that we have here of helping others and doing the right thing. So this was a good training to put everybody through to show people that, hey, we've got somebody coming in from the outside saying, this is the right way to do it. Fortunately, that's the way we're already doing it, so I love that training seminar and it really emphasized do the right thing. We also then focused a great deal on supervisory training, as you can see, we had three graduate from Wichita State Management Program. We had one lieutenant graduate from Police Staff and Command School and then another one graduated from the Central States Executive Law Enforcement Department Seminar. I think it was Roy Reagan who made this a very household phrase, trust but verify. You know, we have great officers who work for us, I trust them, they have good mindset, they're going to try to do the right thing, but we have to verify. We just can't take, you know, we can't just say, hey, this is what you're supposed to do, I trust you're going to do it. So we've put in several things in place to verify that they're doing exactly what we want and how we want to. Guardian tracking, that was, guardian tracking is a software package that I talked about earlier with the early warning system. We track everything they do that's good or bad and it's a good way of documenting those issues and making sure they're doing what we want. The monthly citizen satisfaction follow-up surveys. Each month, supervisors contact three citizens that each officer had contact with and walk them through a short survey to ask them, how did the officer do? How did they handle this call? How did they perform their job? And then also, in conjunction with that, they also pull three in-car videos and three body warm videos and review those. Those are all done at random, so the officer doesn't have any idea what videos you're going to watch and what citizens you're going to talk to. And so, of course, they're going to, they know what we're going to verify, they're going to treat each one of them as this is the one that's going to be reviewed. We also have a new policy on complaints and in the, in your book, you'll see that, under the complaints issue, you'll see that our complaint numbers are starting to go up a little bit. Well, that's because we are so transparent now and we're documenting things that were not documented before. There were complaints probably that were handled prior that were just handled by the supervisors. Now, a complaint comes in and we have a full procedure, the complainant is notified, that we have the complaint, who's going to investigate it? And we have to have a complaint investigated within thirty days. That completion of that complaint, we get a notification to the complainant and to the officer of what the findings of that complaint were. And so, it's completely transparent and above board and I think it provides better communications to the community. If you look at the diagram there you have in the booklets, you'll see that there are a couple of sustained complaints. There, I think there's three total sustained complaints in the last two years. Two of those complaints actually generated from supervisors finding issues with officers, so they were not external complaints, they were internal. Also, we have the social media outreach and online surveys. Our social media outreach, when I came here, I think we had about nine hundred likes on our Facebook page, we're now up to about twenty-three hundred. It's not uncommon to see tens of thousands of people hitting on one of our posts. We had a teenage girl that ran away from home just the other day and we posted that on there and it hit over forty, I think, one thousand people and led to the recovery of the girl who was up in Winfield. So, social media outreach, we've really extended that and we're getting a lot of feedback from the community. That's another way for them to communicate with us. In addition to that, we also have the online survey. The online survey, we push out through social media every quarter. And the online survey is a little bit more in-depth than the monthly surveys. And people can go online and take it and there's open-ended questions and they can provide us feedback. And so, every quarter, we review those and then every year, we review those and determine if there's anything that we need to look at and address. As you can see from the citizen satisfaction surveys, we were officers, I don't know how you can get any more professional than that. Our professionalism is top, so I'm very happy with that. When we move on down the line, we start looking at, were they helpful? Okay, you got a little bit of people on the survey, they're saying, nah, not really. Well, unfortunately, that's the nature of the beast criminal justice system, a lot of times, we can't really do anything. And so, you're always going to have some people saying that. Officers knowledgeable, you've got to remember, we just hired four people. And so, our staffing on patrol is young and so, we're going to see a little bit of that.
Chief, a lot of times, is that, do you find the unsatisfied ones to be unfounded sometimes? That they think they should be treated better than what they actually should be?
You know, these are mostly people who are victims of crimes and witnesses. We're not seeing, I don't think, from what my responses, what I'm getting, I don't think are really from people who are arrested. So I think these are, I think the data looks pretty good, I think it's pretty straightforward, especially on the open-ended questions when they're giving me information. It seems to be pretty open and straightforward on it, so it seems to be good information. Traffic accidents, I'm glad we're doing this after I got you bored, because unfortunately, our traffic accidents, I'm not pleased with. As we talked about Sunday, our non-injury accidents and injury accidents are too high. I'm not happy with those at all, we need to do a better job. And if we had more staffing, which is number one goal for two thousand seventeen, my intention is to have more of a focus on patrol to make a difference in these areas.
Do they have a national ranking on that? I mean, do we fall in?
You know, there are some numbers, I have not for traffic accidents, for crime, I do go off the national data, but for the traffic accidents, I haven't. I've just been going off of traditional numbers here within the city. One thing I would want to point out is that citations really do have an impact on accident numbers. One of the things that we have is when we have less people, we have less citations issued because we have less time to actually do it. One thing I think is interesting, and I don't know, I'm just going to draw a conclusion here, but you can see our citation numbers dropped a little bit. You can say they've dropped a lot since two thousand twelve, but our warnings went up last year.
Almost double.
So total, we had more contacts, more stops, but I'm wondering if I have such an emphasis on customer service that I may have inadvertently prevented officers from feeling like they can issue citations. So we need to hit a pleasant medium there, I think, and so, we'll be focusing on that a little bit. Part one offenses, this is going to be your upper-level crimes such as murder, rape, robbery, burglary to house, those kind of things. As you can see, it's continual decline, we're looking at about a five percent over the last year. Over the, since two thousand twelve, we're looking at averaging seventeen, twenty percent decrease, which sounds really good. Part two crimes, that's going to be your smaller crimes like theft. That, I think, is a one-point-five percent increase, so really, not anything to worry about.
On that part one offenses, how does that compare with the national average? You said, is that a wee low, high, or in the middle?
Well, we're high. Here is the state of Kansas.
Okay.
And so, as you can see, it's kind of middle of the road and it's continuing to go down. So crime rates across the country have been on a decline. Twenty fifteen, we don't have twenty fifteen numbers out, they haven't released yet. But twenty fifteen, some of the larger cities are seeing a pretty high spike, from what I've been told, but we don't have those numbers yet. We're clear up here and while we have had, between twenty thirteen and fourteen, we had a decrease that was pretty substantial. We're headed in the right direction. And when you compare that with Winfield, which had about the same or a little bit more of an increase, you can say, okay, we're moving in the right direction. Even Cali County, which is way down here, they had a little bit of an increase. So I think we're moving in the right direction. I did do the stats in-house from fifteen to six months in and it looked like we had a significant decrease and I was very happy about it. But the last six months came back with a vengeance and so, we're only a few percent down from.
Is that twenty per thousand? Is that the left side, you have the twenty, thirty, forty, fifty?
No, it's a, this is Uniform Crime Reports Crime Index.
Okay.
And so, I don't know the mathematical formula, but they do it per thousand and I don't know what that formula is.
Well, I'm just curious because, you know, when you look at Cali County at twenty, you know, they only service the areas outside of the city limits, both communities. You know, if that was taken in consideration.
Yeah, and the way the formula works.
Where they count us.
The way the formula works, every community, regardless of the size, is comparable. So whether or not you had, you know, Topeka PD on here, their numbers, they'd be comparable because.
And that's why I was just curious, on the Cali County, do they include the cities of Ark City and Winfield in their index, since they tech, but they don't?
No.
Okay.
No, our jurisdiction is ours and so, they handle the unincorporated areas.
Okay.
This is something I wanted to point out, this is, there's been a lot of talk in the media, especially from the Department of Justice, about criminal justice reform. And one of the things that we need to change is, you can't fix problems by arresting everybody. There needs to be some more outreach, some more things that you're doing to fix problems and arresting people doesn't always change the problem. I wanted to point this out, that since two thousand twelve, we've seen a pretty steady decrease, about twenty-five percent decrease in the number of total arrests that we've made. But yet, if you look at the crime index, it's continued to go down too. So again, it's because of the culture in this department. When I came and today is good. The culture is about helping people fixing problems and not just about finding bad guys and putting them in jail. Talked a little bit about operating costs, I know this is a big concern when you're talking about nearly three million dollars a year to operate a police department, that comes out to about thirty percent of your general fund and can be expensive. We have, as you can see, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, our budget amounts were much more than they were in fifteen and fifteen. And the most important part about this, I think, is the fact that our actual expenditures are even less than that. As you can see, back in twelve, they were pretty close and then they just started dropping off. Unfortunately, most of that is because we've been understaffed for all this time. I did go back and look at some documentation from my predecessor and I found that the department, and four years prior to my coming here, had averaged four officers in attrition per year over the forty years. So I don't think it's something that's unusual, what we're seeing, but we just seem to be behind the ball and we can't get caught up, so.
I've got a question on your officers, is it one officer per thousand people? Or how do you figure, I mean, like, if it's population twelve thousand, how do you figure out how many officers you need for twelve thousand people? Or is your formula for that, or?
The officers per one thousand formula is something that a lot of police agencies used a long time ago, but we found that that's really not a good indicator because the difference of your population can make a huge difference on how many officers you need. If you have a bedroom community like Lenexa, Kansas, where your crime rates are low, you don't need that many police officers. But if you have a community that is plagued with more poverty and higher crime rates, you're going to need more officers. We, our staffing here, what I told Mick when I came in was, I'm not going to come in and be the chief that says, we need more people, we need more people. I said, I'm going to see what we can do, we're going to put in efficiencies and try to lower our crime rates and then tell you, this is the best we can do, if you want it better, then we need more people.
Needs more people, though.
At this point, I'm just, I'll be happy to get full staffing and stay at full staffing. So I think we can make some good improvements if we can get to the twenty-six officer level.
The other question is, is the morale pretty high up? I mean, even though they're kind of overworked with, you know, with your four or five vacancies right now, I mean, are they getting?
You know, I think all the feedback I'm getting, of course, you know, they say that the chief knows about this much of what's really going on in the department. So I think that, I try to have it ear to the ground and I try to talk to people who shoot me straight. And I think everybody likes working there, I think everybody enjoys the department, enjoys working with the other people in the department. I think it's a really good policing group, but there is a lot of grumbling about how much work they're having to do, how many hours they're having to cover for other shifts and the fact that they're not able to take vacations and go to. and the fact that they're not able to take vacations and go to family events, because we have, we basically are running minimum staff constantly on patrol. To, to that level.
They're overworked, without a doubt.
For, for instance, Saturday and Sunday, we're down to two people on day shift, and so I'm going out, and I'll be riding a regular car for Saturday and Sunday, so please pray for me.
I heard he used to be mean in the day, he was a patrol officer.
Yeah, we'll get those ticket numbers out.
Yeah, you need to.
One of the things that I wanted to make sure that everybody understands, and something that we need to fix probably by twenty eighteen is, as you can see, our, our people are our greatest asset, but they also cost us. We are running about ninety-one percent of our operating budget for personnel. Statistically, across the country, that should be about eighty-five or eighty-six. When you start taking all your money to, to have the people, all of a sudden, you fall behind on taking care of your cars, taking care of your equipment, replacing those things that you have to replace, because everything today has a, has a lifeline on it for about four to five years. I've been able to be okay, because we don't have the people, and so we've been able to use a little bit of that money that's been budgeted for people, and we're not actually spending ninety-one percent of our budget there. So if we do get up to full budget, though, by twenty eighteen, we'll have to be asking for increases. To put it in perspective, though, I wanted to make sure and point out that while three million dollars, or two point seven, or however you wanna call it, seems like a lot of money, and it's a big chunk of the city budget, I wanted to point out that what that is per citizen, that comes out to twenty fifteen, each citizen paid two hundred and four dollars and thirty-five cents for police services. That's about seventeen dollars a month. That's a, that's a lot less than you're gonna pay for cable television, for cell phones, for, even if you went out and bought a security system, you're gonna pay about double that at a minimum, so.
Is that the kind of a, a state average? I mean, are, are we high, low, or?
We're, we're a little bit low, because of the fact that we're not spending as much as we should be.
Okay.
Yeah, we should, we should be up around twenty, a little bit over twenty dollars. So to summarize, we made a plan. We came up with a way of measure what we were doing, and we've implemented it. And we've looked at and focused on increasing our management practices and customer service, and now we're continuing to look at what we've done, and we're continuing to ask for feedback, and I'm here tonight to, to ask you if you have any feedback, and if there's any thing that you would like to see it change in direction. We are open, and we'd like that feedback.
I think you're doing a very good job, Chief, and we'd like to keep the, the staff happy, if we can. I know having more help, and that's a big problem for us and you two. Hopefully, we can find you one or two. But I think the, the department's doing a great job, and actually, I've heard a lot of people say, well, that's pretty nice about the officers that helped a family with food and stuff like that, and stop and play with them. I think that does a lot, a lot of good for the community.
Yes, and that's, that's a direct reflection of the, the guardian mindset.
I got a question. It's kind of a silly question, but on the organizational chart, you got you up above, then the administrative assistant right, right below you. What's, so what's that person? I mean?
Ashley is my administrative assistant. When you first come into the department, she's the, the one that will greet you. So she's kind of a jack-of-all-trades.
Okay.
She answers the phone, she answers people who come in, and then she assists me a great deal on all my duties.
So if you're gone, is she, is she?
No.
Okay.
No, but she does, she helps with, with all the different, well, like this annual report. She helps me with, she pulls all our statistics for us. Anytime that I'm needing numbers or, or information pulled, she gives that to me. And then she also helps put together these kinds of packets. She's, she does a lot of, she's also one of our vic- victim witness coordinators. She actually helps with interviewing children who have been abused, and she's been certified to, to help with those interviews. So she, she does a lot, not just a administrative assistant.
I was just trying to understand it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and she can make sure to tell me where I need to be when I need to be.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions, Chief?
Police department actually has more likes on Facebook than the fire department.
Uh-oh.
About almost four hundred.
No.
I, I knew that. Just makes sense.
Well, it looks like social media's helping you out a lot. Chief, if you want these back.
I, and again, I, I am so excited and so promising that we had nine interviews set up today, and of the nine, the board is pushing six of those to me for interviews. That is not something we've seen in the past, so.
All nine, okay, you had nine? Nine showed up?
Nine showed up, and, you know, the, the.
Well, that's just, that's a miracle.
This, this whole hiring process has been completely different. We had, of, of all the people that we asked to come in and take a test, we had all but about, oh, probably three or four. So statistically, no big deal, come in and take the test. Normally, we have about half of them show up to take the test. Of the ones that came in and took the test, we only had, I think, two that did not pass. Normally, we have about fifty percent that'll pass. And then for the interviews, we usually set up interviews, and about fifty percent of them show up for interviews. Every single person showed up for that.
Yeah, which is.
The only difference, I gotta say, and I may be drawing straws here, but the only difference is our starting wage, because of the two percent that you gave us, you moved that starting wage from the fourteen dollars and seventy-eight cents an hour up to fifteen oh two. Quality of applicants we're getting is higher, and it's moving through the system a lot better. I think that just making that jump over fifteen made a big difference, so.
The time you, the time you do all that stuff, it's what, a ten, eleven month?
It, on average, from the time we open it up to the time they start with this, is eight months.
Oh, eight months, okay.
There's another seven months of, of training to have to do, so for about, about a year, almost a year and a half.
Did, did any of them have law enforcement history, or are they all?
In this group, we have one who is former law enforcement, but he's been out over the five years.
So he'd still have to go to the academy?
He'd have to do the test and two-week academy.
Yeah, just a short academy.
So if he's successful, that'd be a quicker turn than this.
Yeah, yeah.
Kinda sounds to me like the raise we gave helped you out a little bit.
I, that's the only difference that we've made, and, and I think that that has made a big difference.
I think they got new vehicles too, so.
I, I think that's kind of our, my plan in any way is to try to help you out as we can, to retain employees, not only in your department, but all of them. We talked about that Sunday a lot, so, okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, number two.
Number two. Consider first reading of the charter ordinance regarding a form of government, amending Charter Ordinance number twenty-seven, reaffirming the commission manager forum, and providing provisions for the elections of officers, terms of office, transitions to November elections, final of governing body vacancies, and nomination petitions.
Okay. Tamara, you wanna kinda enlighten us, please?
Yes. The Kansas Legislature adopted laws in twenty fifteen that applied to our form of government. Most notably, the, those laws stated that we have to move to fall elections instead of spring elections, but we can still keep them in the odd year, so that it wouldn't coincide with presidential elections and other things. It would be a, a local, still just local elections. But in doing so, everyone on the commission, your term is supposed to expire in April. But if elections aren't until November, then the terms wouldn't expire until January, when everybody else takes office. According to state statute, it would be the second, second Monday.
Seven months with no commission.
In January, yes. So what those laws require us to do is to adopt a charter ordinance to address these and other issues. The charter ordinance before you for a first reading states that the city commission reaffirms that it will follow the city commission city manager plan of government that the citizens of Ark City adopted on November fourth, nineteen thirty. It also then states that the commissioner positions that would have expired in April twenty seventeen shall instead expire on the second Monday in January of twenty eighteen. It also recognizes that elections will now take place in November of twenty seventeen, and then every two years thereafter, November twenty nineteen. In all other respects, however, our, our form of government stays the same. The top two vote getters in each election would serve for four years. The third highest vote getter would serve for two years. So we still have two commissioners every election, but instead of April, the elections will now be in November. And we did have some options as to whether we would hold a special election, or, or how we would treat that term from, from April to January. But we thought, rather than, than pay for a special election, we are hoping that you fine commissioners will just stay on and, and just extend your term from April to January of twenty eighteen, or April twenty nineteen to January of twenty twenty. One thing we have to address is whether we wish to change our elections for the city to be partisan or nonpartisan. They're currently nonpartisan, and that would be staff's recommendation to keep them nonpartisan. Just the, the best person for the job regardless of your political party. I'm just going through the, the charter ordinance to see what else I should cover. Kansas statute does state that we need to include a nominating petition. If someone's not wanting to pay a filing fee to become a city commissioner, they can instead go around and, and get signatures from registered voters in the city, and we have listed that to be not less than four percent of the registered voters in the city, but not less than twenty-five, no more than five thousand. Let's see. We had also previously adopted a charter ordinance regarding filling of vacancies in the city commission, which we just utilized this evening, of course. And so the, the state's legislature adopted a statute that would apply to some cities regarding filling those vacancies. I've written that we don't want to follow the state statute, but instead, we will continue following our own charter ordinance. Section seven, though, recommends changes to that, and, and this is something we've been working on for quite a while, to extend the amount of time that we have to appoint someone to the commission, because as, as the commission saw this time, sometimes if you wouldn't appoint at the next meeting after we have notice of vacancy, we may have to call a special meeting. So I recommended, instead of twenty days, that's in our current charter ordinance, that we extend to thirty or even sixty days. I also wrote the charter ordinance to state that the outgoing member, if possible, the person resigning, as their last item of, of duty as a city commissioner, that they would vote, they would be the tie-breaking vote for, for the new appointed commissioner. Of course, under state law and, and our charter ordinance, I cast the tie-breaking vote, which is something I've never, um, liked. But, so, so I thought if, if an elected official could cast that tie-breaking vote, that would certainly be my preference for the city, but then.
What happens if he's deceased? I mean?
I left it as the city attorney.
Okay.
I put only if they are able to do so. So that would really be in the case of a voluntary resignation, or we've had a city commissioner move, and under state law, if you move, that's a resignation. So they, their last item of business could be to vote on their replacement.
So, so how, how long would we have to keep them on? If they wanna resign, would we have to have them help us do that before he actually vacates?
Yes, they would continue to attend the meeting until the replacement is appointed, because as, as I wrote it, their.
If they're available.
The outgoing member, if available, would vote on the replacement. So ideally, they, if there were, we had another voluntary resignation, which I hope we don't, but it would be effective only upon appointment of the replacement.
Okay, could, could you lead me through this in the case of appointment, the paragraph right above where we were?
Section seven?
Yeah, the, the candidates in the election receiving the largest, second-largest votes respectively shall be elected for your term. Candidates receiving the third and fourth largest votes respectively in that election shall be two-year terms.
It should only be third.
Should only be the third. Because we don't, unless we have four people, yeah, you see what I'm saying?
No, it's, it's because, just let me read this again. In the case of appointment to the next regular city election, in the, in the, let's see. We wrote this some time ago. We've been working on this language for quite a while.
The, the only reason you would need that is if one of the four-year term people resigned, and that person would be, would fill in that, that two-year term. That would only be, be the only reason you'd want a four-year term. This could get kinda confusing to people reading that, because they think we're electing four people all the time.
Let me look at that.
Hold on.
It says right at the beginning of that paragraph, though, in the case of a vacancy.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
From it.
But it's still saying third and fourth largest number of votes, votes.
Well, it says that we, we shall appoint to fill the vacancy for the shorter of the balance of the unexpired term or until the next regular city election.
Correct.
So in that case, if you did, if there could be four, then it could be, uh, it could be five.
There could be four.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I guess there's no provision in there if all five are up for vote.
Let, let me think about those issues, and.
Let's, so, shall we table this in?
Yes, yes, this is just a first reading, and that's why I'm going in, in, in such, going into it in such significant detail, so the public can be aware of it if they want to comment and contact commissioners.
Can, can we comment on, how, on section three? I, I'd like nonpartisan. For the.
Is there any advantage to being partisan?
No.
Do we get any money or anything?
You might, from, from a candidate or.
Well, the individual candidate.
You might.
What I bring in is outside money that we don't really need.
Right.
And, and then if you go partisan, you eliminate a lot of people that might consider running, because they, they're in federal government service or something like that.
It would also change the primaries.
Yeah. Oh, that's true.
Potentially.
We'd have to have primaries.
I know, I know we gotta follow the state thing, but I still think it's, I, I don't like it, because it throws us into politics, and it throws us into the big elections and, 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 and the way it's been run in the past. You know, our election in the spring is by herself. We're not caught up in presidential election or wherever it is. It's gonna make the, the ballots a lot longer, and I think people are not gonna, you know, they're just gonna get tired of voting, you know, sitting there and, with the, you know, with all the presidential and the state, and then, and then the city behind that and so forth. I just, I don't think it's a good deal, but we don't have no, you know, say-so about it, but.
Well, they did allow it to be odd number of years, or even number of years traditionally are the big elections. But with that being said, the ultimate goal is to eventually have them all on the same time period. I mean, that's eventually how they want it. That's why it was written that way.
Yeah, and, and there'll be a big push again, probably for partisan elections, no matter.
And at this point, we're not allowed to have the election still in the spring.
No.
No, that, that was taken away from us.
You know, that's some of our problems today is, is.
Can't we, even if we pay for it?
Uh, no, well, it's a, a state law that's uniformly applicable to every city.
But, but actually, you could. You could have it, but you have to do the election on that date. You can have an election every year if you wanted to, and there are some communities that do have elections, city commission elections every year, for certain numbers.
Oh, you'd have to do it every year?
But you have to do it for sure on that term, from what I understand.
I would, I wouldn't recommend it.
I wouldn't either.
Yeah, I'm just.
But you have to at least have it this time.
I agree with Jay. I just don't like being pushed around also.
Yes, and that, we do have home rule authority, so that we can change some statutes, but they wrote it so that this one we can.
Well, that's a problem right today in Washington, is party lines, you know, and to me, that's just ridiculous. And I think the best form of government is our local government. I mean, as far as things running smoother and people, you know, if they're upset, they're gonna call you and let you know immediately, and, and you have to, you know, answer to them, and, and I just, I don't like to see us get caught up in politics, and that's what we're heading to. Yeah, I think it's a bad deal, but.
And, and this is the state law that you have here?
Yes, regarding the elecs- elections, yes.
Yeah.
So for the next version, then, I will propose that states the elections shall continue to be nonpartisan. And what about the timeframe for appointing a, a replacement commissioner? It's currently twenty days. We could extend it to thirty.
I think thirty's probably enough.
Yeah, it gives a little bit more time.
Yeah, you don't wanna.
It's two meetings for sure.
Yeah, it is. It's two, two regular meetings.
Yeah, thirty days is fine.
Okay.
It gives people more time to think about it.
And apply.
And, yeah, like, you have two meetings.
Okay.
And, uh.
But if.
Well.
Also, though, if somebody moves away.
Yeah.
Now you could have, they could be more likely to be gone. Now you could have, they could be more likely to be gone if they're gonna be the, the vote. I guess if they can't show up, that, how, that's no worse than what we have.
Well, I'd say thirty, thirty days is the, is the limit, but it could be done sooner.
Yeah.
You know, so, I mean, it could be done sooner.
If they know, it would, it would help.
So thirty sounds good, I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, I will make those changes and we will bring then a revised version to the next commission meeting for second reading.
Okay.
I would move we charter, the, we table the charter ordinance of the city of our Kansas City regarding its form of government.
I'll second that.
Okay.
On first reading, technically, you don't have to table it.
Yeah, we don't have to, yeah, we don't have to do that.
It just carries on till the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, then I withdraw my motion.
I'll draw a, I'll draw a second.
You just don't take any action because you have a second reading.
Okay, we'll uh table the charter ordinance until June twenty-first.
Item number three, consider first reading of an ordinance modifying municipal code to combine the human relations commission and accessibility advisory board into the equal opportunity and accessibility advisory.
Uh, this is a resolve the action that we talked about at the last study session or two study sessions ago in regards to trying to get more participation in our boards. And it was uh um consensus to bring something before the commission for adoption. So before you is the first reading, of course, you don't have to um approve it on first reading.
So we, we would have seven seats or how many, how many people would be on the combined board then?
I think a minimum of five, ma- maximum of seven.
Seven.
And it'd be one board.
Right.
Is there any reason why to postpone that to the next meeting? I mean, it's, to me, it's just almost like a no-brainer. I mean, as far as-
Well, we discussed that can't get enough people to volunteer.
I'll then, have you looked, the accessibility advisory board has not met since two thousand and eleven.
Correct.
Right.
And human relations hasn't met since February this year, which isn't too far.
Right.
But, uh, yeah, if we can make one board that
That can reach.
That has a function.
Mm-hmm.
It'll give them more purpose and it'll be a more rounded, bigger picture type group and then they can help us.
So, so if we combine these, uh, does it, uh, do, do they still have to have a, a, a number of people that are handicapped in, in any way?
I think we have two.
Two?
Yeah.
Just have to have two?
Correct.
Do the functions, though, do they work together? Does human relations commission, that has to do with city employees, correct?
It has, has, no, actually it has to do with disabilities.
They're all disabilities, yeah.
All disability.
The uh equal opportunity or the human relation commission looks at housing, um, um-
It kinda fits together.
Yeah, that's, you know.
Housing discrimination, they look at-
The names don't necessarily sound like they're running together.
No, the ADA was really specifically for the Americans with Disabilities Act and making sure that the facilities and the entities are, you know, exactly were following ADA rules and guidelines. And they would help uh with a transition plan to, to help the city make sure we're doing the right things. Uh, human relation commission looks at housing issues, they look at um trying to promote culture in the community. They do a lot of multiple different things, so it's kind of a good fit, I mean, to bring together.
Do, do we need, do we need to figure out who's gonna be the director, or, I mean, the liaison between the city and, and the board?
Um, there'd actually be probably two individuals. There'll probably be, uh, Richard will probably be um a staff member on there. And then Marla McFarlane will still be on there as well. So we'll have the human resources component and we'll have the building component in that group, so. Or their destiny, so.
I would, I'd like to see seven members, since we're cutting it down to, cutting down two boards.
Well, I think the goal is to get seven immediately, but it can still function at five, but nothing, no less than five. But the goal is to continue to have seven.
So if we combine these together, then how many, uh, right now, the two boards, how many do we have?
I mean, how many interested individuals we have so far? Seven.
Okay. I had that somewhere.
So if we have a seven, seven-member board, the forum is four?
Yeah, so what we can do is we can, if you, if the commission wishes, they can approve the combination today. At the next meeting, we'll, we'll uh get the interest forms and we'll get those individuals' names brought before, before the commission for approval.
I don't, I'd like to make a motion on this because I don't see there's any purpose to, to carry it on, I mean, for another meeting because I think it's, it is, it all fits together, I mean, the way I see it. And uh, and we, you know, and then they could bring uh potential board members back to us at our next meeting and uh, so we get going on this thing because it's, you know.
And I'll second it.
Well, I, I make a motion that we consider the ordinance modifying the municipal code, part two, chapter two, article three, divisions four and eight to combine the human relations commission and accessibility advisory board to the equal opportunity accessory, accessibility advisory board.
I'll second it.
Okay, and then they will set up their own meeting times?
Yeah, we'll establish all that. We'll have the first immediate meeting and then we'll establish the meeting dates and-
I'd like to propose that we make the board just five members. Five members and two staff. And the staff are non-voting.
That'd be good with me.
I mean, that's fine.
That usually is just expiation.
Yeah, we would be expiation. We would, we would never be voting.
I think, in my opinion, generally when boards have been a little smaller, it actually allows freer discussion.
Mm-hmm.
And actually maybe a little less groupthink because the one person isn't, if you have one or two that don't maybe agree, now you might, they feel like they're six against them. And uh, and then it's easier to have a quorum and it's easier to-
Yeah, I think Andrew has a column. He wants to make a comment real quick.
Um, Commissioner Yucovich, I totally understand what you're saying. Um, the reason we kind of were thinking seven, in my experience, just analyzing this, we're having a tough time getting enough people at meetings to make quorum. And what I've found is the five-member boards generally, I mean, you only need three, but sometimes it's really difficult to get to three. With seven, it seems like we have a better time getting to four and that's just something we've observed. So it was more an attempt to make sure we'd have a deep enough pool of interested people uh to come to the meetings. But we could certainly do five. Uh, the human relations commission was five and, you know, I th- I think that worked okay other than the lack of direction that they had. The accessibility board, I think, was seven and I, I don't know how that worked because, like I said, it's been dysfunctional since we got here. Um, we could do it either way, but I think it was just to have a few more people go up for vacations and those sorts of things.
I thought, what, the, the human relations council meetings that I sat in on, I thought there were more than five people there.
I think the board was up to about nine.
Yeah, yeah.
It was never full.
Yeah.
Not full board.
Yeah, because it seemed like there were six or seven there when I would go.
Yeah, I think it's five up to nine, um, because we amended that down to seven. Uh, it's been five for the last year or two years at least. And even that's been tricky to get those to come, so, uh, but we can definitely get five. We, I think we can get seven, whichever you want to do.
We could try five and if we, you can't get the quorum you need, we can go up.
Why don't we start up and then if we can't get them, we go down?
Go down?
Yeah, it'd be easier to do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or here's six. No, it doesn't, doesn't make a good board.
Okay.
The time was-
Seventh?
I, yeah, well, it's already been, it's already been motioned and seconded, so I was putting an input in there. And if nobody goes, I didn't, I can't, I didn't amend the motion, I just-
Well, we didn't, we didn't specify the number.
No, we didn't specify the number.
It is in here, though, it is.
Yeah, well-
It says five, didn't it say five to seven?
Five to seven seats.
So-
Five to seven seats to be filled.
Accessibility advisory board shall consist of no less than five and no more than seven. Or is that? Yeah, that's one of the things that is not crossed off in what I'm reading.
Okay.
Which is, so if that's the way it's been motioned and, or that's the motion and the second.
Yeah, yeah, I should-
So if we do not, if we just approve it, then-
It'd be seven.
Then my comments.
Well, appreciate your comment.
Nobody cares about me, that's all.
Well, you can choose to only appoint five.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can.
And see how that works. And then if it doesn't work, without making a legislative change, you could simply appoint two.
So if only five are appointed, then if three is a quorum?
That's right.
Yeah. Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Warren and seconded by myself to uh approve the uh ordinance modifying municipal code, part two, chapter two, article three, divisions four and eight. All in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call vote.
Commissioner Yucovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Tweedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
Common sense, I'll just say yes.
Mary Smith?
Yes. Motion carried.
Senator Thor, consider a motion to request that the Arkansas City Planning Commission hold a public hearing and consider an amendment to article twenty-five of the zoning regulations concerning the structure of the planning commission and or board of zoning appeals.
This is an easy one. You're basically asking the planning commission to hold a meeting, uh, public hearing to discuss the possibility of them joining. Outside of that, there's, it's simple, just a request.
I move that uh the Arkansas City Planning Commission hold a public hearing and consider an amendment to article twenty-five of the zoning regulations concerning the structure of the planning commission and or zoning board of appeals.
I'll second it. Any more, any discussion commissioners?
It's, uh, we've tried this once before and, and we got shut down, but I think, I think now's the time to do it. I mean, the state allows us to do it.
What do you mean, we got shut down?
Oh, it's-
They didn't want to do that?
They didn't want, they, they thought there was too much conflict between the two boards in there. The state allows us to do it, so.
How long ago was that?
Yeah, it was back before.
So does the commission want to combine the two boards? Is that the, is that what the public hearing is to look at, combine the two boards?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah. I think so. Any other comments, Commissioner? It's been moved by Commissioner Yucovich and seconded by myself that uh we motion the Arkansas City Planning Commission hold a public hearing and consider an amendment to article twenty-five of the zoning regulations. All, roll call vote?
No, it's voice vote.
Where am I, where am I?
It's on the back here.
Okay. I'll take word for it. Uh, all in favor, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'll oppose.
But it does say roll call.
It says roll call.
It does say roll call.
On the agenda, it says voice vote. On the agenda, it says voice vote, but I'm the-
I'm here, it says roll call.
It says roll call, I'm the individual item.
Will, will it pass? Are, are we legal now? Okay.
No, you're right there. This is the agenda.
Okay.
I'm going off there. Sorry. Okay, next.
City manager updates?
Yeah, city manager update.
Um, we, we're gonna have to uh re-designate the official city newspaper. Um, we have a little bit of time, but just given the, um, the news that the Courier and the Traveler are gonna be joining, we're gonna have to re-designate at some point in time. There are some rules that govern appointment. Uh, one is they have to be a weekly publication for the last fifty weeks or last, have to do at least fifty publications in the last year on a weekly basis. Um, they have to have second-class mailing of the paper. They have to sell over fifty percent of their, um, newspapers have to be sold, so they can't just be a free publication, so. But we'll bring that back in front of you when it gets a little bit closer to time. I communicated with uh David Allen today a little bit about that, so. He's, he's gonna seek some guidance due from uh his attorney and he's gonna be looking at fees and as for the legals and uh trying to get all those costs to us so we have a better understanding. So he'll come back in front of us and be happy to answer any questions when we get closer to time, looking at that, at re-designation. The second item's a primary depository for banking services. This is another one of those consolidations that makes us want to take a look at what we do and our services we provide. Um, Corner Bank is, is, is actually a depository for banking services currently. Uh, they're being bought out by RCB Bank. And so even though it's a lengthy process and it's a pain on multiple levels to look at uh banking services, it may be an opportune time to look at um seeing, getting quotes, seeing what services each one of these banks provide. See if we're losing any services from the transition in consolidation to make sure we're not. Um, and just taking a fresh look at that. So that's something that um Kathy's gonna be looking at over the next couple of months.
In my experience, some of the work we would have to do, we'll have to do anyway. As far as, because you'll get a new routing number, maybe a new account number. And some of those things where you have to re, things that were automatic before, you're gonna have to redo anyway, so.
But is, is the merger, is the merger guaranteed? Don't they still have to get federal approval?
They have to get approval, but it's pretty much a done deal. It's just time.
Okay.
There's a time component to it. I mean, if something were to come up and they said, no, it's not gonna happen, then of course we'd probably continue with Corner Bank. But I don't, at this point, I think it's better for us to be proactive than, and, and start looking rather than waiting until it's, you know, it's done deal.
But we can use the current bank we have?
We, we can, yes. Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely.
It'll end up being RCB?
Yeah, we could use the current, the bank would actually just turn over and it'd go to RCB Bank. But Dan is right. There's a lot of things that we're gonna have to transition as well in, in that process. So it is gonna be work regardless.
All right.
Uh, next item, water treatment plant. Uh, they actually are starting this week, so you'll see some movement out there. They're capping a twelve-inch water line right now, uh, that runs right through the middle of Curry Field. And so that's gonna be removed, that line's gonna be removed, but that's the first step so they can start really getting to turn to work because it's only about four foot deep in the ground, so it's not very deep. And it's a big water line. So that's in the process of being um removed and taken out of service. Uh, last item, um, I'm actually gonna be out of the office Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of next week and Sunday as well. I'm gonna be um at Cub Scout camp with my son. And the place that we're at does not have very good cell service. Yes, so.
Do you have a good replacement?
Um, Tamra's always my, my go-to, so. Um, but I'll be available. I mean, there'll be ways. I'll, I'll check my phone, but I'll probably have it off most of the time. But if you do anything that's important, just get old Tamra, um, and she can get, she can take care of it immediately for you. But outside of that, um, you know, I'm glad the hospital sales tax passed, really glad. Um, budget's coming along. Thank you so much for meeting at the budget retreat. Gotta get you up to speed now, so you and I are gonna spend quite a bit of time, Karen, going over a lot of different documents and projects and trying to get you where you need to be as quickly as possible, so. I'll be your best friend for a while. So your part-time job being full-time.
I might, my dad, I ran into Mark, Captain Mark McClaslin. He's out of the hospital. He's up and doing very well considering where he was thirty days ago. And he's, he's bound and determined. He's coming back. He's gonna beat this thing.
Good. Glad to hear that.
What would do we have to do for, for Mark to, um, work through the process? It's a process.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we gotta go through the proper steps. Outside of that, um, things are, things are going well. You're gonna see the Summit Street project coming here before too long. We're getting close. And um, uh, today I met with third graders, which was kind of a fun thing. And they're doing a service project for all the schools looking at recycling. So I think their overall idea is to get to the point where they can do single-stream recycling in the school district. And um, we talked a little bit about how to do it and how to go about it today. And I showed them how if you take your normal trash can with people that got trash flowing out and bags set aside, if you would just take the time, break down the boxes, take the plastic out, rinse it out, rinse the glass bottles out you have, and separate the recyclables out of the trash. It was amazing because I started out with this mound of trash. And by the time I got done, we had this much trash in the bottom of that can that was actual trash. And the kids were just amazed. And I said, that's how your trash can looks. And I said, you know, you really don't need this big of a can if you recycle. And they were just astounded, so. Uh, it's a good exercise, I think, for everyone to go through and it's something that we've kind of offered to, to people if they have questions on how to recycle. You know, we want to make it easier for them and that's our end goal, but uh there are short-term solutions uh to their needs, so.
Is the Skyline project pretty much done?
We, we had the final walkthrough today, so there's a punch list of certain items that have to be completed, but outside of that, it's done.
Good.
It is.
Looks good.
Maybe go back up and look at the street.
Yeah, go by and look at the streetlights tonight, too, when they're on.
I'll do that.
And, and when you're driving, then you may think, you look out in the distance, you may think, oh, there's five lights out. Well, they're LEDs and LEDs are part of that um dark light initiative, so they don't bleed light- Well, they're LEDs and LEDs are part of that um, dark light initiative, so they don't bleed light out. They only shine where they're directed. And so you can drive by and it looks like the, that head is dead, the light head's dead, but really it's on and it's working just fine, so.
Okay. Any other, any other business from the commissioners? First motion, adjourn. First motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
It's the move by Commissioner Welch and seconded by Mr. Tweedy to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all in-